Ask the clerk to take a roll call, please.
Bodie?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Kroll?
Here.
Rosendale?
Here.
And Carberry Montgomery is absent.
All right, thank you. Please stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Urbendale is a national leader in character counts endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in respectful manner consistent with these principles. Item two does approve the agendas, our motion.
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Rosendale. Discussion, please vote.
And would you like that motion to reflect the removing those items?
Oh, yes, thank you. So, we would be removing item 6.13, which is a duplicative item on the agenda, and then also item 10.2, the applicant withdrew that, so are you okay with amending your motion accordingly?
Yes.
And your second, recognized?
Wasn't 6.8 a consent agenda item that's no longer going to be a consent?
We're gonna, well, when we approve the consent agenda, I'll just ask for that.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's still on the agenda, but we'll.
I gotcha. That's fine.
So we are amending, or we'll approve the agenda to delete items 6.13 and item 10.2. Thanks. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. That passes. Item three, presentations. We have one proclamation tonight for 2025 National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas the month of October is recognized as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, a time to celebrate the contributions of workers with disabilities and promote awareness of the importance of inclusive employment practices, and whereas people with disabilities bring valuable skills, talents, and perspectives to the workforce, contributing to the diversity and strength of our community, state, and nation, and whereas National Disability Employment Awareness Month reflects a commitment to creating a society that values the abilities and potential of every individual regardless of disability. Now therefore, I, Robert Andwig, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Urbendale. I call upon all residents, businesses, schools, and community organizations to recognize the contributions of workers with disabilities, promote inclusive employment practices, and work towards creating a more accessible and accommodating workplace for all. Let us celebrate the abilities and achievements of individuals with disabilities in the workforce. And I know we have some folks here tonight from Iowa Forest Mount, from the Disability Access Committee. I'd like to have them come up and accept the proclamation. Speak on behalf of the group.
I'm willing to.
Sure.
So just thank you for acknowledging National Disability Employment Awareness Month. It's been very important to all of us on the committee, and thank you for all that you do.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to citizens forum. This is the opportunity to address the council on something that's not a part of tonight's agenda. We do have several public hearings. I'll call on speakers for those items in public hearing. If there's something else that you're here for, just let me know at that time, and then we'll recognize you as well. But this is for the opportunity to speak on something not a part of tonight's agenda. Would anybody want to address the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item five, and that's the adopted minutes from the September 16 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rosendale.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That.
Listen to it on T. I did watch it, but I wasn't here, so that's why.
You're abstaining? Okay, thanks, Pat. All right, that passes. Item six is the consent agenda. We will move item 6.8 and do that separately, but we'll ask for a motion to approve everything but item 6.8 at this time.
Motion to approve the balance of the agenda for 6.8 to be considered separately.
Okay, motion by Rosendale.
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote. That passes, and then we will bring up item 6.8, and Pat, I'll turn it over if you want to ask some comments on this.
Yes, thanks. I really appreciate you letting me visit with the council here about it, because I think it's a very important report and well done. And I did, of course, listen to the council meeting that I missed and agree with all of the comments. And I think it's important to recognize that we do need to, you know, be careful. But here's, here's a clause in declarative sentence following to think about. If we're not, if we're too careful, it might be our caution that is our undoing. So I think it's important that we think about what we can potentially look at implementing from this report. As I was looking at it closely and trying to do some math, and so what I'm kind of suggesting here is we think about it this way. These projects have 25-year life. And right now, the, with the tax incentives, if they were to be in place, we're looking for most of these projects as having roughly half that as their return on investment or their simple payback, right? And so I was doing some ratios of if we did these projects with no tax incentives, what would be the simple payback in years? Now, I had to use ratios to do this because I'm not a smart economic genius like David and the people who did the study. So I think someone else really needs to do the math. But I'm still looking at simple paybacks that are 20 years or less on projects that have a 25-year life. And we have a couple of projects coming up that are actually new roofs. So while it's not a whole new project like the police station would be, they're new roofs, which is where the solar's going to go. So I think what we might want to do is check my math, see if some of these projects really do fit the criteria of being under 25 years in payback, and recognize that this report is not intended to really be exclusively about the fiscal piece here. We really need to be doing public awareness, public education, demonstration, putting together some level of leadership in this region around these kinds of sustainability pieces, which we are capable of doing and can do here, and also get the greenhouse gas emissions reductions, which is a big piece of what this is about. So as we're looking to head into CIP and budget, some of these things really only have a couple of years lead time before they replace the roof, like the public library, if the report is correct. And so I think we would want to put in the dollar figures, figure out a way to put in the dollar figures on some of these projects, as though the incentives did not exist. We might still get tax incentives, and/or we might be able to secure grants or other ways to make the initial capital expense lesser. But if they pan out fiscally, and we can find a way to incorporate them into the CIP and budget for them, I think we should do that. And I would say that the Fire Station 42 project is particularly appealing because it's not a giant upfront expense, and it has, even according to the report, a level of public awareness to it, a level of education and demonstration that some of the other projects might not have in such quantity. So I think as opposed to thinking of this document as everyone was committed to not letting it be on a shelf, and I greatly appreciate that, and I appreciate some of the cautions. But as we think about not wanting to put it on a shelf, what can we prepare to implement should it work out? And instead of drawing ourselves away from it, and, you know, maybe two, three, four years when incentives are clear, then going after it, well, we will have missed some of these opportunities. So that's what I would like to propose we give some real consideration to. And it might require step one is to go back to the consultant and say, how do these pencil out if there's no tax incentive available? Because I'm not sure my little ratios that I was doing are the best way to go. They might be, we might find out. I was, I had a perfectly good method. You never know. But I think that would be step one, and I would imagine they could do that very quickly. They've already always, it's just plugging the different capital number into whatever they were using, generating that, and then looking at that and saying, okay, what one, two, or three of these, and probably no more than that, probably more in the one or two range, could we put into the CIP and prepare to budget for? And I would pay, again, particular attention to Fire Station 42 because we, they've done so much work on that already, including the microgrid design, and not design, but, you know, the concept, that we could probably get that one implemented before 2027, the deadline in 2027, and take advantage of some of those tax incentives. It's possible. But at any rate, if we don't do the work of getting it into CIP, I think we're lost, and we will have been, I think, overly cautious. That's my two cents that took me longer to get out than I had intended, and I thank you all for listening.
No, Pat, we appreciate you keeping us on, looking at this and making sure we evaluate all parts of this, so I appreciate that.
I think, Pat, to your point too, if there's, if there's a question of like scale of projects, like even if there is for that project, you know, like a lot of them were fairly large arrays and things like that, even if there's a sense of scale that makes more sense too, that might be something worth considering too, because if there's not $2 million, you know, whatever to put into something, then maybe there is a $200,000 array or, you know, or whatever that looks like that maybe is more realistic, but also gives kind of that balance of we're saving some money, we're promoting.
Yeah, and that's what Fire Station 42 is, was a quarter million dollars. I don't think it's realistic to look at City Hall slash engineering. I don't think that's realistic. But even the, but, and the public library has a pretty big price tag upfront if you, even if you, all you do is the roof, which I would suggest we would only do the roof. But we could do the roof because we're looking at one to two years out for a new roof. So it just seems like, boy, that's an opportunity that we really ought to give some additional consideration to before we pass on that. That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
And I agree with the educational, like, there's so much that we can do from an educational lens to help people understand how does solar work?
Yeah.
What is the ultimate impact of solar?
Yeah.
So I do think there is, there is strength in going back and reviewing, how can we implement this, and what pieces make sense here?
Yeah, and the Rec Hub project was not particularly pricey at all. That was a relatively low-cost price, and relatively speaking, I don't know exactly when that project's going to happen. It's probably best done when they do the remodel, right? And they even said we do have to kind of look at the roof and et cetera, and its age and security. But it's got distinct possibilities and another natural fit for public education.
Yeah, I'd like to see the math without the incentives, just to see how that pencils out, and at least leave the door open. Maybe addressing this in the CIP depending on what the math tells us.
And it might be worth, you know, when we're talking about a world of limited resources and things like that, where we do really need to be very attentive to what we choose to and what we choose not to do, just having some of that in mind to basically say, if we march forward with doing A, we're going to have to delay C and, you know, C and D and F, right? Just to better understand kind of what, what those trade-offs look like, because I think that's, that's a hard thing to kind of just look at amorphously as well.
And one last note here, you know, it could be we could just visit with these consultants too. They did a really nice job. And without doing like major feasibility, might there be some smaller projects that came to mind for them as they were looking at these things? Something, something more intimate, smaller, but still do, you know, a doable piece? They might have some ideas, and I don't know, I have no idea what that would be. But I heard at one point some discussion about doing something at Pollinator Gardens, you know, different things that we might be able to pull off that are very low cost, but at least get to the demonstration piece and the public education piece, if not the greenhouse gas emissions lowering, which I would love to get to do. So.
All right. Thank you for all that.
Thanks.
Sorry, Bridgette, give me just a moment, because my.
Oh, Bridgette's here. That's great.
Weird thing.
Thanks for listening, everyone. I'm putting my math away.
Can you try speaking again? I apologize. Let me try one more time and see. Okay. There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, they can hear you now.
Okay. I'm listening, watching from Phoenix. I'm not planning on voting, but I, this is important enough, I wanted to jump in and say that I spoke with Pat about this this morning, and I completely agree with her. I think we need to find a way to do some sort of demonstration project or keep this in the forefront of the CIP.
All right. With that, would you want to make a motion to receive the study?
Yes, yes. Excuse me. I would like to move that we accept the solar feasibility study. Can I also say that we would like to encourage the staff to go back to the consultants to see if we can get more math, to look at simple payback at least with respect to no tax incentives included in the construction dollars.
And that, that's likely something we can.
Do without a motion?
Take on our, no, take on ourselves.
Oh, okay.
You know, without re-engaging the consultant.
Okay, great.
I think that work is done, but stay tuned.
Okay.
We'll follow up on that.
All right. So we'll want to accept the solar feasibility study report, and we will look forward to receiving some additional information related to costs that do not include tax incentives.
All right, motion by Bodie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kroll. Any further discussion? All right, please vote. That passes. Moving on then to public hearings. We have three public hearings. Thank you, Pat, for them, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
So item seven, public hearings. We have item, first item 7.1 is a public hearing to consider the noise ordinance waiver for the Urbendale Water Utility Aqua for Storage and Recovery Project, which is also known as ASR. The public notice for this was published in the September 26, 2025 Des Moines Register. Asking their objections to that notice as published.
There were none.
We have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Rosendale.
Second.
Second by Kroll. Discussion, please vote.
Councilmember Bodie, did yours come up?
I'm sorry, didn't take.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, that passes. And to introduce this, I'm going to ask Neil Weiss from the Urbendale Water Utility to come up. Please, Neil, direct. Please come up and introduce the item, then we'll open up for public hearing. Is your mic on, Neil? I don't know if the, there you go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Want to thank you again for taking the time and as we can consider a noise variance for this ASR project and work through navigating, moving forward with this project. When we met last in August, we received a lot of great feedback from city council members. One of the key takeaways from that meeting was the key component was customer outreach and customer notification. So that's something that we certainly took very seriously, came up with an approach on what we can do to get the word out about this project. So you can see here is a list of items that the water utility has worked very close with city communication staff in getting word out about this project, and specifically the noise ordinance or noise variance for this, the well drilling component with this project. So following the September meeting, we did send out customer letters to the properties surrounding the project. We did also do door-to-door communication with several of the properties right near the project, specifically the subdivision directly to the north. There's about six homes that are occupied in that new subdivision. I was able to speak with five out of six of those homes. And then we did have some communication southwest of there. I forget the name of that road. Hickory Drive, I believe. There were several residents along there too that we were able to speak with face-to-face. And I would say that all those conversations, people really didn't know about the project. I wanted to see if they received the letter, if they had any comments or questions. Overall consensus, they, they learned about the project. It was more of an education. But it was, once we, once we were able to speak about our mitigation for the noise, I think there was a lot less concern. So a lot of great conversations with the public during that door-to-door exercise. We did also speak with Radiant Elementary, provided them a lot of information as well, and had a, had a face-to-face meeting last week with the school. We also included notifications in the last two utility bills, providing information, links, contact information to reach out with more questions. City staff did include a article in their latest newsletter, which we did receive some feedback from customers on that. So thank you to Derek and his staff for including that in the newsletter. Information on the websites, both on the city website and the water utility website, have been included on the front pages, as well as two former public hearings at the Water Utility Board of Trustees meeting, one for the financing portion of the project that was required, and also the environmental review portion of the project as well. There's actually 35 to 40 special interest groups that we reached out for comment during that environmental review process. We didn't receive any comments back from them. So just want to touch very briefly on the overall benefits of this project. As we spoke in August, there are several benefits to the city of Urbendale as well as regional benefits with this ASR well. So historically, we have seen the water demand increase very steadily here in Urbendale as, you know, following the population increases. We expect that to continue into the future. This project will certainly support that growth, both residential growth and economic growth into the future. One of the key components of this project is the increased and improved resiliency of our water system. This will be another pumping point into our distribution system. It will help as far as emergency preparedness in terms of water main breaks, providing the water demand as well as pressures needed for our distribution system. And lastly, one of the biggest items is water rate stability. There's a, a large financial impact between this alternative of the ASR and purchasing additional water through Central Island Water Works. So we're actually going through the process right now with Central Island Water Works of requesting how much capacity we'd like to purchase in the next two treatment expansion projects. So those requests are due very soon. They do have estimates as far as how much it will cost for these new treatment plants. So they're estimating it'll be $20 million per 1 million gallons of water. So this ASR project that we are proposing is a 3 million gallon per day well. So comparing that to the CIWW cost for, for purchasing capacity, that would be a $60 million upfront cost for the ratepayers versus the design bidding, construction for the ASR well project is $15 million in upfront capital cost. As you can see there at the bar graph below, there's a comparison of water rates in, in Urbendale versus a lot of areas in the metro. Historically, we've had very affordable water rates. That's always been our goal to, to make rates affordable for customers. We'll have a high level of customer service, and that's certainly our goal moving forward. If this project, for some reason, weren't to move forward, I can say with absolute certainty that these rates are going to go up tremendously and much quicker than anticipated with this ASR project. Lastly, just want to remind council our plan for noise mitigation. During the well drilling portion of this project, we intend to construct a sound attenuation wall around the project site. This will be roughly 30 foot tall. Very similar to what has been done previously in West Des Moines for their project, which was recently completed. They had great success, no complaints as far as customers. They reported very low-level decibels readings outside of the sound attenuation wall. As I noted in August, the pickleball courts were actually their highest reading of decibels. So this approach has been widely used across the metro. It's being used currently with Des Moines Water Works as well. And before that, it was North Liberty had great success with this method as well. So we'll note that we are planning to utilize the same consultant that West Des Moines Water Works has used in their ASR project, as well as Des Moines Water Works. So they have a lot of familiarity with designing systems to mitigate this, this sound during the well drilling process. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Neil. Any, any questions from the council for Neil at this point?
Yeah, I've got a couple here. So when it comes to the bill notification, was that specifically just paper bills, or was that for folks that did paperless as well?
Paperless as well.
Okay. Sounds good. And then I just want to appreciate the door-to-door communications and the feedback that you got on that. I think, you know, it, it does take some investment to get out there and actually hit the doors and get some of that immediate area, but I think if we hadn't done that, that's, you know, whatever 10-ish people that are immediately next to the site, that would have had no idea. And so I think that especially for the folks that live right there, it's very helpful.
Thank you.
And just a question about kind of the future. Is there kind of a future plan for doing more ASRs as kind of capacity expand, or like as demand expands and the city grows and things like that?
So that has to be approved through Central Island Water Works since the capacity, the treatment capacity of the region really determines how many ASRs you can have in a system. So it does increase your demand during the winter. The winter is normally a time the plants are taken down to perform maintenance duties. So their overall capacity is usually lower during the winter. So there's, there's a limit, and there's a, there's procedures through the 2080 agreement as far as adding additional ASR wells throughout the region. So this ASR well in particular was included in the 2080. Urbendale's and West Des Moines and Des Moines Water Works were the three that were approved in the 2080 before.
Gotcha. So anything future would just be basically like if they're like, oh, yeah, we need something out in Pleasant Hill, like, you know, that, that type of thing?
There could be more added as they add more treatment capacity.
Gotcha.
Then they could consider adding it, and we'd have to go through the process of who, whether it would be owned by one of the entities within CIWW or a CIWW-owned asset.
Gotcha. Thank you.
This one is obviously is going to be owned by Urbendale Water Utility, right?
Correct.
This is part of our system.
Yes, it is.
But any future one would either, would either be possibly a CIWW or of one of the other cities or utilities?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. All right. Any further comments or questions from the council? This time for Neil. All right. Thank you, Neil. Appreciate that. We are on public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to address the council on this item? All right, seeing none, is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve Council Letter 8302.
Second. Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. All right, that passes. All right, thank you, Neil. Ron, thank you for being here as well for representing the trustees. So we realize this is something that, you know, we, again, something very important for our community as far as our future is concerned, but also something we wanted to make aware to our residents. So thank you for everything you've done on this. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 7.2, and that is to consider the Meredith Drive Right-Away voluntary boundary adjustment. The public notice for this was published in the September 19, 2025 Des Moines Register. Asking objections to that notice as published.
There were none.
Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Cacciatore.
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote. That passes, and to introduce this is our community development director, Steve Franklin. Steve?
Thank you. Good evening, all. So let's just admit upfront.
So, let's just admit upfront, this one's goofy, and now it's even more goofy based on what we have to do tonight. So, just as a matter of, of quick recap for you, you might recall in July, council approved the mayor executing applications to sever and annex a portion of Right-Away along Meredith Drive. It's owned by the city of Right-Away, but it's in the city of Grimes. And so, Grimes, in accordance with a boundary adjustment annexation moratorium agreement we have with them, have for many years, they passed a resolution to sever the Right-Away. And then, Urbandale Council in, what, August fourth, established a city, or excuse me, a public hearing date for tonight. And then, we can move forward and take this with the Schaefer property, which is this property adjacent here to the north, all to the city development board at the same time. However, in the meantime, we have discovered a Scrivener's error in the legal description that was used for all those documents. And because the corrector, correct territory description needs to be used in all these proceedings, and we need to have Grimes approve that, we have contacted Grimes with a suggested resolution to pass at their meeting next week. And so, really, in discussions with city attorney, what we'd like to do tonight is have you make a motion to continue the, the public hearing until August twenty-second. We do believe that Grimes will have approved it by then.
August twenty-second.
October.
Or October, yeah, I'm sorry. What did I say? I said the wrong one. October twenty-second, and we can take it up then. And then, in the meantime, also do a resolution to approve the resolution that would correct the Scrivener's error.
Okay.
And then, Grimes would do the same thing next week, and then we could move forward.
All right.
That's it in a nutshell.
All right. So, with that, is there first of all, any questions for Steve from the council?
So, we're not taking action specifically on the resolution tonight. We're just going to continue.
Continue.
Yeah, we're not going to close the public hearing tonight. We're going to continue it.
Okay. And then, we'll take action on the actual Right-Away piece of it on the twenty-second. So, tonight, it would only be approving the resolution to fix the Scrivener's error.
Oh, the, the resolution's just to fix it? Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
So, with that, is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this item? As well, we're in public hearing tonight. House case, seeing none then, I'll ask for a motion to continue this to the October twenty-two meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Bodie.
Second.
Second by Rosen Dahl. Discussion, please vote. That passes. All right. Thank you, Steve. Item seven point three is a public hearing.
Don't we have to move this Scrivener's here?
Motion to approve resolution twenty, two fifty-one dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
By Rosen Dahl, second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Then, moving on to item seven point three, and as a public hearing, to consider the Best Manners Business Center, Lot sixty-one Oakwood Haven, Platte One Amendment to the Planning and Development Master Plan at forty-seven hundred to forty-seven eighty-eight eighty-sixth Street. The public notice for this was published in the September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, Des Moines Register, answering objections to that notice is published.
There were none.
Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Steve?
Okay. Thank you. This is, uh, this is really kind of a cleanup issue. Give you a sneak peek at a preliminary plot, which you'll see here in a couple of agenda items. But this is the PUD amendment part of it, which is, right now, the PUD, as it was written, has a minimum lot width of a hundred and eighty feet in our discussions with the developer to acquire Lot Two for the future fire station. In order to get all of the easements, access easements, and everything that we needed in there, at the end of the day, with this new lot configuration for Platte Two, it leaves a lot of a hundred and seventy feet width. And so, we just need to amend the PUD to go down from one eighty to one seventy, just kind of a cleanup for all that. If we had the extra ten feet, it really doesn't, it wouldn't result in any additional buildable area because of the access easements and everything down here. The buildable area is all going to be up here. So, from a practical standpoint, it doesn't really make any difference anyway. We just want to do it officially and go ahead and get formal approval to reduce the lot width from one eighty to one seventy. Should you approve this, we'll come back here in a couple of items and answer any additional questions you have about this preliminary plot and final plot. Happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Questions for Steve on this item? We're in public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve the amendment to the Best Manners Business Center PUD Master Plan.
Motion by Rosen Dahl.
Second.
Second by Kroll. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Moving to item eight, that's to establish new public hearings. We have one, item eight point one, to establish October twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five, for the development agreement with MP South LLC. Aaron, would answer any questions if there are?
Motion to approve Council Letter eighty-three hundred.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote.
Just had a quick question on the ratio for those, or for the, the grant. So, I think that was there, basically, if it's a retail versus non-retail, it changes the amount of the grant?
Yes. In, in our development agreements, if there is a retail user in these, then that, the, the portion of their use of the building to the total would be reduced.
Okay.
So, if it was twenty percent occupied by retailers, the eligible amount of rebate would only be eighty percent of the total.
Gotcha. So, it's, it's driving toward a non-retail kind of office use space.
Correct. Yes. The incentive is for non-retail.
Gotcha.
See, we had, where were we on this? We have a motion, we had, yes, we're voting on this.
That's my discussion.
That passes? All right. Yes. Moving on then to item nine, one playing zoning item, item nine point one, and that's to consider the Oakwood Haven Platte Two preliminary plot and final plot at forty-seven hundred and forty-seven eighty-eight eighty-sixth Streets. Steve, would answer any further questions if there are? Do you have anything further, Steve, to add?
No, just that this would be the formal approval of the preliminary plot. So, there's the preliminary plot there, and then here is the final plot here. Situation here, obviously, where the preliminary and the final can be done at the same time. And these are the three lots in question. And then, the one lot where the, the width is being reduced is this Lot One, this northernmost lot.
All right. Motion to approve Oakwood Haven Platte Two preliminary plot, subject to conditions?
Okay. Motion by Rosen Dahl.
Second.
Second by Kroll. Discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve Resolution two five zero dash twenty twenty-five.
Motion by Rosen Dahl.
Second.
Second by Kroll. Discussion, please vote.
I think I must have cold fingers.
That passes. Item ten point one is to consider the employee insurance benefits renewal for two thousand twenty-six. And our HR Director, Erin Freeman, would answer any questions if there are? Erin, do you have anything further to add? She's happy to answer any questions.
I did have one question. There was a couple of items that were, I forget which ones they were. They were fairly significantly decreased because of shopping around. Is that, is that a typical thing, or, because it was one carrier we switched to for a couple of those?
Yeah, they hadn't been marketed for several years. So, our broker anticipated there, there would be some savings there, and we experienced extra savings because we battled with them for some of the voluntary lines of coverage that are switching as well.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So, if there's a motion?
Move Council Letter eighty-two ninety.
Motion by Bodie.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes. We'll move on to city manager's report, David?
Not tonight. Plenty to say in a minute.
All right. Amy?
I don't have anything either.
Joe?
Well, I wanted to congratulate the mayor for receiving the Community Champion Award.
Yes.
A champion you are.
Oh, thank you.
That was deserving. The Sample Urbanale event, I, I thought was nice. I also participated in Run for the Badge. And rumor has it, I won my age group, so.
Joe actually ran. I walked, but Joe actually ran.
I was approached by one of the sergeants who organizes that event about maybe elevating it a bit so that we have timing and more of a setup, the way formal races are run around here. That would attract a lot more, a lot more participants. And I think we could even probably increase the fee because I think it was only five dollars.
Yeah. I think, I think they have some other plans that they're going to elevate that to, yeah, so.
Good. I, I would support that, and if I can assist with that, I'd be glad to do it.
It started, the history of it started with the Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. It was designed, they did have a run actually in DC, and we would, we did this essentially, you know, in conjunction with that here in Urbandale. But they have now stopped the, the fall run at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. But I think, so we still do it in support of that and in support of Justin Martin. But I think, I think the police department is going to maybe do a little bit of shifting based on the fact that the national organization doesn't do that anymore, that make it, make it kind of our own.
Is it, is it branded Run for the Badge nationally?
It was, yes.
We, but we wouldn't have to call it that?
No. Not necessarily, no.
We might, we might want to just, you know, pay tribute to Justin Martin in the name of the event, would be my thought.
I think UPD has some, some good thoughts on that that they're working on, so.
And that's all I've got.
But thanks to them for, they've really embraced it and taken it on and organized it. So, I want to thank our, I want to thank UPD to, to really do that, so.
It's a great event. They could have eliminated the, the hill. Other than that, it was great.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Joe. Blake?
I just wanted to do a quick update. The right, the day after our last meeting, we have a Bravo meeting. So, just wanted to, to give a couple of updates from that. There is a event on December eighth. I still need to check my calendar to see if I can get to that. But it is kind of their formal announcement of, of the different operating grants and, and trying to get folks into, to gather folks right before the holiday season to make sure that people are aware of Bravo's mission and, and get folks kind of like targeting public officials and, and organizations in the community to get some education out there, too, about how Bravo is, is structured and, and all of that stuff, so. I'm looking to see if I can get involved there to attend. It is open for anybody to attend, so I'll try and get some dates together so that I can actually send that out, so that everybody knows what that is. I do not know off the top of my head what the time is. Catch Des Moines visited and did kind of an overview of what they did and how they play with Bravo and, and kind of how these two organizations play together and, and elevate the metro. They rolled out the City Hall report to considerate, for considerations of turning Des Moines City Hall into an arts venue. They're not advocating owning the venue or operating the venue. They, the real goal of that was trying to keep arts and culture in the conversation as that building undergoes some transformation and, and kind of a change of focus, so. If anybody's interested in that report, there's a, there's a smaller version, and then apparently, there's like a hundred-page version that I haven't read.
Okay.
But the, the smaller version is kind of a nice read of just kind of see what options are available and interest in the community for what types of uses the building would have, so.
Is that just a link on the Bravo website?
I think so. I can dig around to see if I can find the exact link and send it out.
Okay. That'd be great.
And then, they are also doing a quick research study to dig into kind of various cities around the metro and in their organization to better align their messaging around kind of what the priorities of the communities are. So, I think there's going to be a lot of looking at strategic plans and looking at different other organization goals that all of these different cities have to better kind of communicate how Bravo is delivering in alignment with those priorities that each of the cities have and kind of make sure that everybody's getting the, you know, seeing the value of the organization. So, when we get the update, or when we get the actual report, I think it's going to be per city that is going to have a report. So, when I get that report, I'll be sure to share that out as well. We talked about sample Urbandale already. I'm looking forward to the Mushrooms Ribbon Cutting. I've been swinging by a little bit. As they're getting installed, they are looking really cool. And I'm looking forward to seeing them about at this time of night, too, where it starts to get dark, so see the lights on those. And just one last item to thank the folks at Iowa Works for coming out. I got a chance to sneak in the trailer, or the, the mobile unit they had. It was pretty cool to have, to hear them. I asked, how many times a year do they get deployed? And he said, well, how many times a week? Because apparently, they're on the road for four days a week usually, back and forth and back and forth across the state, going for business closures or job fairs, or, you know, various things like that to provide services. And it's free. So, that's something I think we can keep in mind for businesses in Urbandale, too. If, if there's kind of an acute need for fast action kind of employment services, I think that could be a good support.
Absolutely.
That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Blake.
I don't have too much except to say the Reimagined Dart meeting was really, very good. I know, I'm not the only one who was there. That was a very good meeting. I'm excited about what's coming up on October eleventh, from four to seven, that downtown Urbandale party. I don't know what the name, I can't remember the name, Aaron. Block Party. Why did I forget that? I, I love it. And then, also wanted to mention the October twenty-eighth at five-thirty for Journey is the actual official name of our four outstanding mushrooms. And they are, I believe, Dunn. Have we, I've been there around this time and not seen the lights yet. So, have we flipped the lights on yet? We have? Ooh, good. I'll pop over there before. I must have been a little earlier than I thought. Okay. That's just really great. And then, most of the water stuff, Walnut Creek, WMA, and Icon and all that, I have meetings coming up, but nothing to report right now.
All right. Thank you, Pat. Well, I think.
Bob?
Yes?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I would be remiss if I didn't talk about Dart. But since I'm not there to have, go into all sorts of details, if you guys have any feedback for me, I will be, I have surgery next Tuesday, but I'm available Sunday and Monday. Want to talk or email, let me know if you have any questions. I've got a meeting the week from, in two Mondays, where I have to basically say if Urbandale has any concerns. So, just moving forward with that. And then, I also wanted to congratulate the Northwest Girls Tennis Team for winning singles, doubles, and team tennis, again, now that it's a fall sport.
That's cool.
That's all I have.
Joe calls them Urbandale West High School.
Yes. There are a lot of kids from Urbandale, but also.
That's right.
You know, Clive, maybe, maybe walk you, too.
Yep. All right. Thank you for, I just want to report in addition to what everybody else has already reported. I attended the Civility Summit in Indiana, as I, I talked about. That's been over a week ago now. Great event. Stay tuned. I've got a lot of thoughts on that. I'm going to work on some things I might, that I want to implement moving forward, so. But there were over two hundred people there. It was, it was just a fantastic event, so. And the organizer of it, I think I mentioned this, but the organizers of it is an Urbandale native. So, he, he's a county council person in Carmel, Indiana, and grew up in Urbandale, is a nineteen seventy-seven graduate of Urbandale High School. So, we had a great discussion about Urbandale, too, so.
That's great.
All right. With that, we have two closed session items. So, we still, we just do a motion at a time. We're going to do a motion for the real estate one, then come out of that and then come back. Okay. So, first of all, then I entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to. So first of all, then I entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one point five one J regarding real estate.
So moved.
Motion by Bodie.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight.
Nicole, am I able to stay in? I'll be able to keep listening for probably another fifteen or twenty minutes.
Yes, we can. We can keep...